But is that under bungee anywhere?
Okay. All rise.
We've never seen it.
Good morning, Miss Gumbel. Two or three things before we start. First of all, we're being livestreamed. So we must all make sure that we respect the anonymity of your client.
Thank you, my lord, yes.
Which means not merely the name, but also any other identifying details.
My lord, yes, in respect of that, can I just mention, I think now the skeletons have all been revised where there were inadvertent mentions of names, but not every single document in the bundles, in terms of the chronologies, has all the names taken out.
That's why I'm reminding myself as much as anybody else that we need to respect that.
Thank you, my lord.
Secondly, does anybody formally need leave for filing a supplemental skeleton? We have a feeling that there was one, we can't quite remember which one it was, or I can't, for which permission has not been given. Whichever it is, it doesn't matter because we're going to, yes, Mr Sack.
My lord, the first defendant got himself a little pickle over that, as you will see from our skeleton argument. However, permission was given by the master of the civil appeal's office.
Okay, all right.
So we don't require the court's permission, we believe, thank you.
Thirdly, on the question of the fresh evidence, what we're minded to do is to look at it, to then essay and make a decision about it in our judgment. Shall I just see if anybody wants to have a word about it, Mr Donnelly, you're looking as though you might. The hate expression came over your face.
Yeah, my lord, it certainly affects my clients rather than Melanod Friend's clients. We object to this evidence being part of the appeal. I've indicated to Melanod Friend that if she wants to adduce the evidence as part of her appeal, we would like the opportunity to persuade your lordships that you should not look at that evidence. Her response to me was that she was going to argue the case on the basis of the material that was before the judge and not rely on the additional evidence, but reserve the right at the conclusion of her submissions, I suppose depending on where the appeal is going, to then make an application, or rather, her junior will make an application, an application which I will oppose.
Okay, well, I think we'll deal with it that way then. So you'll carry on on the basis of the existing material and then if you wish to refer to it, you'll make the application again. Thank you.
My lord, yes, can I, just on that point, the history is that I drafted, and I'll take responsibility for it, I drafted the permission to appeal skeleton argument with that material as I had it. I was unaware, because the references in the judgment to the social services files, I was unaware that it hadn't been before the judge. I then felt we had to reconcile that position by making an application to rely on it because it was in the skeleton argument for permission to appeal, so.
Okay, well, we'll come, we'll deal with it in the way that I suggested, we'll come back to it. Oh, yes, my lord has a question about some other documents.
Just so that it's clear, if you can't answer now, do tell us later. But before the hearing took place, before Mrs Deputy High Court Judge Obi, had the Worcestershire documents, the social services records, been provided to the appellant? That's the first question. And secondly, on what documents is the detailed chronology, which is attached as an annex to the particular claim base?
Obviously, I wasn't involved at that stage.
No, that's why I said if you want to do it after lunch.
Could you take instructions on those points and let us know, please?
My lord, yes, no, I understand that there must have been a, the further point is that obviously the judge in the care proceedings gave permission for the files to go to the official solicitor, which is how the proceedings started. So clearly, somebody had seen them because that was the basis of the official solicitor being instructed, was the care proceedings judge sending the files to the official solicitor.
Well, that makes me think that Aby might have had them before the hearing, and in which case, the natural implication is that he and his legal team did not seek permission to adduce them at the application for summary judgment. But it may be, secondly, that the chronology, the detailed chronology, is based in part at least on some of the material in the records, but that your junior will be able to tell us after lunch.
My lord, yes, and that's a point I was going to make, that there are, there are three possibilities for reaching the threshold criteria for Article Three. The material that the judge refers to in her judgment, the material that she doesn't refer to her in her judgment, but is in the chronologies before her, and thirdly, the additional material that I referred to in the permission application, which is the formal documents that were before the care judge. But there are further documents that she, that the learned judge didn't refer to, which are the details in the chronologies, were certainly before her because she refers to seeing the chronologies, and so.
Well, I think it would be helpful if your junior could let us know in detail the position after the adjournment.
Maybe we need to contact the previous solicitors because neither my junior nor I were involved at that stage.
Mr White.
My lords, maybe I can assist because the records are from Birmingham.
They are.
They were disclosed with the letter of reply, so that the claimants' then advisers would have had them at that point.
So they had the, from Birmingham, they had the Birmingham records and what I'm calling the Worcestershire records.
No, my.
That's because it was the Worcestershire records I asked about.
My, before you were talking about the social services records, which were the Birmingham ones exhibited to my instructing solicitor's statement.
That we've got and that's explained, Mr Donnelly's statement, which puts not all the pages but most of them. But it's the Worcestershire social services records that, I'm just wanting to track down really, if possible, where they come from.
But, my lord, the position in relation to the documents which have now been produced is, as the application ever says, is that they have been in possession of those, or rather, the predecessors of those, instructing Melanod Friend, have been in possession of those since 2017. That's made clear in the application.
That's the two documents that's in the new evidence, but in my mind, there must be documents which have been loosely called the Worcestershire social services records, the events that happened after the family moved to Worcestershire. And it's those documents that I try to identify specifically, my question to Miss Gumbel is whether those were disclosed. And I thought it might have been disclosed in 2017 before the hearing, before the judge, they would have been available to the parties if they wished to make an application to put the documents in. And it's the Worcestershire social services, and there must have been, well, we know there were initial assessments and so on after the children were picked up by the police and things like that.
My lord, yes, well, I'll put my head together, Mr Jacobs, and try and get an answer for your lordships at lunchtime.
One final point. We're aware, Lord Justice Lewis and I in particular are aware, that the appeal to the Supreme Court in HXA and YXA is due for hearing this term?
My lord, no, it's been listed, I think I can find the exact date, but it's the middle of October.
Okay, all right.
Turn to the eighteen.
It's our provisional view that the outcome of this appeal is not contingent on that in any way, do you agree with that?
Entirely, my lord, it's an entirely separate point, it's an alternative route which has been used by claimants to.
Yes, okay.
Bring claims on similar material but by a completely different procedural route.
Okay, well, that's, I enquired so we can know, in case we needed to await the outcome of that appeal before deciding ours. We didn't think we did, and it sounds to me you agree.
My, no.
Finally, have you had a chance to consider and discuss with your folks and Mr White, with a timetable for the hearing? We've got a day and a half, do you think we're going to take a day and a half?
My lord, I would hope probably not, I will hope be less than two hours anyway, but.
All right, well, let's see how we go. Yes.
My lord, it is, it is an appeal that relates to now only what is the threshold for Article Three of the European Convention in relation to the plight of being abused and neglected by their natural families. I would say at the outset, and I think that this is important from the claimant's point of view, that permission to appeal was granted by Lord Justice Singh on the fifth of September, that's at page sixteen of the core bundle, specifically stated that grounds one to three raise important issues of principle on which this court should have the opportunity to set out its authoritative views. There is therefore a compelling reason why this appeal should be heard. And the claimants' grounds one and two were in relation to the operational and investigative roles of the local authority. And that point was argued by only the second defendant before the judge. The first defendant, once permission was granted, put in a respondent's notice joining that argument. And those arguments were then conceded by skeleton arguments put in after the claimant's skeleton arguments. So the claimant's skeleton argument still addresses grounds one and two, but the second, the first and second defendants no longer do because in their supplementary skeleton arguments, they conceded that point. What I would say on behalf of the claimants is that we would ask the court, if at all possible, to give some judgment in relation to those points because, as I say, Lord Justice Singh saw that as a compelling reason for an appeal, that there should be a decision of the Court of Appeal. And if the position were to be that the court were to say, well, those points didn't need to be argued before us, so we don't need to consider them, then we would be left with the judgment of Miss Obi sitting as a deputy high court judge, which although not binding on any other court, would be and is being used persuasively before district judges and masters around the country to have applications struck out in relation to Article Three for the reasons that ground one. Ground two, we say, was, doesn't add anything, it's really ground one, which is important. But that if the oper, if there is no operational duty owed by the local authority, then cases can be struck out on that basis, it's obviously very unsatisfactory when it's a point that's now been conceded by both defendants despite raising it in this appeal. So obviously, that's probably as much as I can say on the point, but I did put a mark down that it would be helpful generally. And I did base that on the specific reasons that permission to appeal was given, that that wasn't.
So you would like us to say in our judgment, even if only briefly, that this was a concession which was rightly made?
Indeed, my lord, that may be, that may be sufficient, but at least in opposing strikeout or summary judgment applications based on that finding, there can be some decision of Court of Appeal overturning that as an authority that can be relied on in any way. I think that's probably what I need to say about that.
Right.
It's right that in relation to the claimant's skeleton argument, there is a significant part of that which is no longer relevant if those points aren't being argued. And, I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't put in a further one, partly because we'd hope that that would be looked at at least with a view to giving some direction as to what the operational duty was or that there was an operational duty as now conceded. So that does take us through, it's most of paragraph three. Paragraph four, we deal with the investigative duty in one paragraph. So the severity to engage Article Three doesn't actually start until paragraph five, which is page one seventy-two of the core bundle. I'm not going to get through all the authorities in that skeleton argument, I hope we set out a summary there, but I will be turning to some of them. So the only limb of the judge's findings that we are now concerned about is the point as to whether the threshold was reached. And the judge wasn't concerned, and this is accepted in the skeleton arguments of both defenders, certainly the second defendant wasn't concerned with whether enough was done by the local authority in relation to it. She was looking at the simple point, could the behaviour that was complained of reach the Article Three threshold? And that's an important point. And what I seek to do is look at the way that the judge examined the cases in relation to the threshold. We do criticise the way both that she looked at whether the Article Three threshold was reached and the way in which she conducted a summary judgment application. So as we would say, effectively to carry out a trial on the pleadings and to look at both sides of the argument on the pleadings rather than to look as to whether at trial the Article Three threshold could be reached.
Before you, that I'd actually read the judgment slightly differently, I certainly understand what you say about whether or not there's a real and immediate risk of treatment which, if eventuating, would reach Article Three, and did the defendant know or wanted to have known about that, I understand that. But I thought that, for example, eighty-four to eighty-six, they also dealt with, the judgment also dealt with whether or not what you were saying ought to have happened, i.e. that the powers that they would have had to have used would have been the powers to make an application for a care order. Because when you talk about removing the child, I understand it to be an application for an interim or full care order. And at eighty-five and particularly at eighty-six, the judge appears to say that no risk prospect of establishing that there would have been a conclusion that a care order was required. So I had initially read the judgment as covering the fourth step, if you like.
But she didn't have any material before her as to that.
That's a different part, yes.
There would have been, needed to be expert evidence as to the standard of social work, care, if that was what she was looking at. And the reason the second defendants argued that she didn't need that material was that she was then looking at whether the threshold was reached. So it is unclear because she appeared to go on to deal with that point in her, what we would say is her analysis, which was a trial on the papers as to what the answers would be to the allegations made by the claimants. So the way in which I would approach the judgment is to say, first of all, to look at the findings that the judge did make in terms of the allegations that were made, which were clearly, she sets out at paragraph seven, page forty-four in the bundle, the incidence of the factual outline. And that's the starting point as to whether the threshold can be reached. Is to look at those allegations. And in one sense, from the claimant's perspective, one might say, one only has to read those allegations to say with any knowledge of the case law that those allegations must potentially reach the Article Three threshold. But what the judge appears to have gone on to do is to then look at various cases and compare the severity, but also to look at what the defendants plead in relation to those incidents and what their answer to them is, and then say, I don't think the claimant's going to reach the threshold at trial, so I'll give summary judgment now. And we say that is not the correct approach. What the judge did in terms of looking at the cases appears to be to look at individual cases and say, this case isn't as bad as those. A good illustration of how she doesn't appear to have correctly interpreted the Article Three threshold is to look at how she dealt with the case of Tara. If I can take your lordships to that. But we would say the Article Three threshold can be reached in five separate ways. In that Article Three provides that no one should be subjected to one torture, two inhuman treatment, three inhuman punishment, four degrading treatment, and five degrading punishment. And those are all separate routes to reaching the Article Three threshold. And that is clear, and it's, the judge's misunderstanding of that, as we would, we would say, is illustrated by the case of Tara, which is at tab five in the authorities' bundle. And this is. And it also seems to indicate that it's partly the way it was argued before her because there is a difference in the skeleton arguments of the first and second defendants as to whether Tara is a case where Article Three was reached or not. And it's at tab five, and the finding in that case is best set out at paragraph, it says out in the summary at the beginning, and the finding that it did reach the Article Three threshold is that it reached it on the basis of degrading punishment, but didn't reach it on the basis of inhuman punishment. And what the judge appears to have, and that's apparent from paragraph twenty-nine of the judgment on page thirty-eight of the bundle, whereas if one looks at what the judge found it is that the threshold was not reached in the case of Tara. And the reason for that may be that the second defendants certainly are still saying that the Article Three threshold was not met. And that's at page two oh six of the second defendant's skeleton arguments for these proceedings. The middle of paragraph eighteen, by comparison in Tara and the United Kingdom, An costello and Roberts, corporal punishment involving three strokes of birch, which raised but did not cut the skin with a beating, with a shoe respectively, did not pass the threshold. And what the judge found was that it, and strictly, the way the judge put it, was that the, in the case of Tara, three strokes of the birch did not amount to inhuman punishment. That is, of course, correct, but it did amount to degrading punishment and it did reach the threshold. So that it is important in terms of the way the judge approached Article Three that she seems to have been under a misunderstanding as to the ways in which the threshold could be, could be reached.
Could you just refer, please, to the precise point in the judgment?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Where you say she went wrong.
It's paragraph thirty-one.
Thank you. Right.
Not sufficiently severe so as to amount to inhuman punishment, which strictly is correct, but it is misleading to approach it in that way. It doesn't go on to say that did reach the threshold in terms of degrading punishment.
Do you quarrel with the first sentence of paragraph thirty-one? Do you say she's wrong about that?
Actively bodily harmed injury is sufficient. Well, it's, it's difficult, to be fair, it's difficult to argue with it has got to be of a sufficient severity. But the issue is what is that severity? Clearly, a brushing past someone might not be a sufficient severity. But the level of severity which she considered was necessary in saying it was beyond the severity in Tara is wrong because the severity in Tara was sufficient for it to be degrading.
But that was because he was made to strip in front of the police officer and his father and wiped in a room. It was sufficiently hard that his father nearly attacked the police officer, and that's why it was degrading. I mean, the judge, as I read this passage, was just dealing. I mean, the judge, as I read this passage, was just dealing with the issue of Article III for the purposes of an assault rather than a degrading assault. Or is that a misreading?
Well, I would say it is a misunderstanding of the Article III threshold to say that in Tara... It's curious to say that the threshold wasn't reached in Tara because it didn't reach the threshold of inhuman punishment and not to go on to say, but it did. And that's why I took your lordships to the passage in the second defendant's skeleton. Because to be fair, I think that's the way it was argued, although obviously I wasn't there. But that may be the explanation, that that's how it was argued.
She then cites Costello Roberts as an example of a case where punishment, corporal punishment was found not to be degrading treatment.
My lord, that was the further point I was going to make, that she doesn't seem to have distinguished those as different tests. It was just, she sees those two cases as not reaching the threshold is how I'd understood that passage.
That's why I come back to the first sentence in paragraph 31. That's the proposition that she's advancing. Now, you may be right that the authorities she cites after that don't, if looked at in the way that you've described, support that proposition. But do you quarrel with the proposition that actual bodily injury of sufficient severity or intense suffering is also required?
Well, as I say, it has to be of sufficient severity, but what is that sufficient severity is the issue. I think it's difficult to say that she should have said actual bodily harm is always of sufficient severity, if that was the alternative. There is a threshold to be reached, but the threshold depends on all of the circumstances and that's the important issue that comes in. And it will be a different severity for a child of a different age and a child who is particularly vulnerable. And a persistent course of conduct will be different from a one-off incident. And these cases that she's relying, that the judge is relying on of Tara and Costello Roberts are one-off incidents. And here, what is important is that this is a course of conduct over a period of time from when the claimant was two years of age originally in Birmingham to 12 years of age. So it's over a very long period, a persistent course of incidents, some of which are identified in the judgment, others of which are identified...
The cases cited in paragraph 31, forgive me for interrupting you. The cases cited in paragraph 31 are cases of inverted commas corporal punishment. It is the case of DP which she cites in 32, perhaps the one which is more relevant to our case?
It is. The nearest relevance, in one sense, is Zed and the UK because it's a very similar series of events of neglect of children and actually looking at Zed and the UK. And the fact in that they are not that far from the facts in this case.
Shall we just have a look to see if you're right about that? So where is that?
My lord, yes, can I just identify the... It's tab 12, but I can...
Thank you.
The facts are at page 237 of the bundle. This, in the Zed and the UK case, and what was referred to by the judge was that the point was never argued before the European Court as to whether the threshold was reached because it was conceded by the government. But it was conceded by the government after a finding by the Commission because the case was heard at the time when you had a Commission hearing and then a a full court hearing and the Commission findings were then accepted by the Court. So whilst it's strictly right to say that there wasn't a finding because it was conceded, there was a finding rather by the Commission. And the facts are set out.
So the facts are here summarized between paragraph 11 until paragraph, at the cutoff would might be thought to be paragraph 38 where the care order application is issued. And it's your cases that the pattern in the present case is on the same scale, behavior is on the same scale as in Zed, is it? Is that your submission?
It's similar a similar course of conduct. The details that are identified by the judge may be less stark in some ways. But when one looks at it with the chronology, they are similar. Obviously, every case is different in terms of how many children and how long they're locked in their rooms for and what happens to them. But it's a similar course of neglect and some physical punishment by the parents of the children and insufficient feeding and that course of conduct rather than a one-off event of either degrading punishment or inhuman punishment. It's a course of treatment. And that's really what this case is about, although there are elements of punishment as well, including punishment causing injury to the child.
The seven, if we take the the seven incidents relied on in whichever summarizing judgment. It's your cases that that pattern is on a par with or the same scale as the pattern of abuse and neglect summarized in Zed, paragraph 10 to 30, whatever it was, in Zed. Is that right?
Well, there's similar allegations which, if you, if, as we say, should have happened, the judge said and referred to the social services files, you look at all of the detail at trial, it's the same type of course of conduct. But these are enough to identify that a course of conduct similar to that found by the European Commission and then adopted by the Court in Zed and the UK as a course of conduct causing of neglect.
But this is an application for summary judgment, it wasn't a strikeout on the pleading. And she looked, for example, at the first report where the child was said if it bleached hair, which had left him with chemical burns. But she looked at the social services report from Birmingham, which was in evidence. And she said she doubted that the social worker could add anything and AB couldn't add anything. And the documentary evidence was that he hadn't got bleached hair and he hadn't got chemical burns. So do we not have to look at that when we look at the chronology as well?
My lord, no, that's what we criticize, the fact that she was making a judgment between the two accounts. The one on the part of the claimant has pleaded that this did happen and the pleaded account was she didn't have the social services record. She had the party's chronologies setting out there, basically, she had the party's cases as to what happened.
This is what I was asking, I thought she had Mr Donnelly's witness statement, which had the extracts for the relevant incidents in the chronology. And I thought she did have that, or did she not have that?
Well, she had she had the defendant's response to those allegations. But what we would say is that it's not permitted on a summary judgment application to look at each side and come to a conclusion. What the fact that both sides are describing the same incidents differently is the very reason why you need a trial to ascertain who's right in that respect. And that it isn't permissible on a summary judgment application to make those judgments between the different accounts of the event. That's exactly what shouldn't occur on the summary judgment application. The judge was cited. The criteria for summary judgment of what appears not to have the guidance as to what can be ascertained at summary judgment if there are other details that may be ascertained at trial. And what isn't permissible, we would say, is to make exactly that comparison between what the defendants are saying and what the claimants are saying by way of a summary judgment application.
I thought it was different, it's probably my fault. I understand that if you compared the defence with the particulars of claim, that would be one set of circumstances. My understanding was that she had the records of Birmingham. And if there were other records, you had them and your client didn't apply to put them in. So this wasn't a situation like a strikeout where you take the pleadings at their highest. This is a situation of summary judgment where you decide whether or not to grant summary judgment because there's no realistic possibility of success. And she was saying, well, AB's not going to give any evidence, the social workers are not going to be able to give more evidence than in the record. So what else other than the records would there be? And it was the records, not the comparison of cases, but I may have misunderstood it.
Well, I think it was that, those were the answers to what the claimant had pleaded, but it would only be at trial as it could be ascertained what had actually happened, which may be why it's necessary to look at the summary that was agreed before the care court, which does give a different slant on what had happened. But, and the very fact that there are other records and there are the care proceedings papers is sufficient to say that there was more material that would need to be looked at at trial to see what the full circumstances were, rather than making a decision on the party's respective cases as to what happened at a summary judgment hearing.
Can I just ask what evidence was adduced on behalf of the claimant when the application for summary judgment was put in?
Well, there wasn't evidence, there was the pleading.
But there was material...
And the chronology.
There was material in the possession of the claimant, for example, the social services records for Birmingham. And we're dealing here with Birmingham. And you're not allowing the threshold documents for Birmingham. And some of those documents were put in. And had you wished to put in the other documents and say, no, 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 there's other records, you could have put those records in, couldn't you?
Well, theoretically, yes, but what was put in was the claimant's summary from the record, which begins at page 99 of the core bundle. And is what the, what the claimant relied upon.
I'm very sorry, Miss Campbell, could you just give me that reference again?
I'm sorry, it's page 95 of the core bundle, which is the chronology attached to the amended particulars of claim. And particular passages that might have been relied on, particularly in the in relation to the first defendant, start at page 104, the police referral ABC walking unaccompanied. And then...
Does this chronology add anything to the summary of the incidents which we we have in the judgment? If one's looking, if one's seeking to assess the severity of the alleged ill treatment?
Well, it brings this case closer to the Zed and the UK in showing that this was a persistent course of neglect by a mother who was incapable of providing a reasonable standard of care so that the child was suffering over a number of years. And to say, if all the judge was looking at was the episodes that she listed, which I've taken your lordships to, then it might be said that if she was relying on those being isolated episodes and the only episodes relied upon, that she took one view. But if you read the whole of the chronology, you would see the persistence of the mistreatment of the claimant in much darker view and there is more detail. And that goes, if nothing else, to the point that at trial there might be far more detailed circumstances to look at in terms of whether the Article III threshold was reached.
Well, I entirely understand that and no summary judgment should ever be a mini-trial. But if one looks at the first instance, for example, which you've identified, your evidence is page 96, second box. A caller alleged that X was neglecting Y and then goes on to give details. And, I mean, that's obviously hearsay. We've got no evidence from that person, but accept that for what it may, understand that a trial may give us more. At paragraph 66, the judge then says, well, in fact, a social worker called around the same day and made these findings. I mean, there's no point in having a trial if nothing's going to change at the trial, is there? And what could change in relation, for example, to this first specific allegation?
Because at trial, you would investigate whether the social worker was right or whether the claimant, the account in the records was right.
But AB can't give any evidence, we know that. They've said that he was too young. He wasn't even three and he doesn't remember it. So it's an anonymous caller, so we're never going to have the caller. So all we've got is the social worker's record. So what, the social worker would come along and say, well, I remember now, although I've worked that down, in fact, it's not accurate or for some other reason it doesn't capture the event. Is there any other realistic evidence on that incident, for example? Is that the findings of the social worker when she went to the house would not be the only evidence you've got? And if that's the case, if that's the only evidence, then you have to assess whether that, together with the other incidents, some of which are not indisputable, amongst Article III reach?
Well, you would want to cross-examine the social worker at trial as to where this account came from and whether really she was dismissing it as not as serious as it should have been in the context of other incidents and whether you should have, what was going on in the intervals between the incidents? Because that's what happens at trial and that's what happens in terms of the care proceedings. Which may be why the fact that the care proceedings have subsequently looked at all these incidences is also important. But it's picking off individual incidents and dealing with them by way of summary judgment is inappropriate in terms of a course of conduct in relation to a child as to the single point, did it reach the Article III? as to the single point, did it reach the Article Three threshold? Because any of these incidents, and certainly the incidents taken cumulatively, cannot be said they didn't reach the Article Three threshold as the Article Three threshold is properly interpreted with the different aspects of inhuman treatment and degrading treatment. Cannot be said that none of these incidents, or the incidents taken together, could reach that threshold.
Um, in Z, at two five two. Bear with me. I'm just lost, forgive me, just a moment.
C ninety, the commission recalled ill treatment-
The commission, yes. Two nine, is it? Where, where is the commission's assessment of the? I had it open and I've now lost it place.
Well, this is the, the first part of this, is the, is the, the commission. Because the, the analysis there is the commission's, the commission recalled-
C ninety-five on two five four. And the court accepted the commission's evaluation. Problems such as the children stealing food, being undernourished, behavioural disturbances and developmental delays, and the insanitary conditions of their living conditions prevailed consistently over the four years, eight months that followed until they were taken into care in June nineteen ninety-two. There were from an early period suspicions that there was physical abuse. The two boys had been beaten with a poker. A disturbing instance indication throughout that the children were suffering psychologically and developmentally. So your case is that this, our case is on a scale as, the same scale as that? Consistent?
Well-
There were, those concerns were prevailed consistently over the period we're talking about, leading up to, in our case, the care proceedings being started, or whatever is the end date. Is that right?
Well, this is a longer period of time. There are a number of incidents of physical abuse, of thrashing and pulling hair and pulling upstairs and mother, uh-
The, 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 at the moment, I can't see how the chronology adds to the short summary of the seven incidents which the judge raised. And what the chronology does is talk about the social services' actions or ad hoc conversations that occurred during the period when the fire was opened. It doesn't, it doesn't add, as I see it, to the picture of the extent of the abuse.
Well, except if you read through certainly the two thousand and twelve, of the entries from two thousand and twelve, starting on page one hundred and four.
All right.
And see the numbering of entries of worrying treatment. It does give a fuller picture. There's the incident on the eighth of April, then the tenth of April.
A B.
Said to stay with D every weekend. And that's, one of the, one of the findings seemed to be that he didn't go back there. But after the incident where the police had taken, uh, the claimant into police protection because of the conditions, two days later, on the tenth, he said they stay there every weekend. And then unannounced visit on the twenty-third, children left unsupervised, not in school, mothers asleep upstairs. And then you carry on through.
But, but this is all about events that occurred with Worcestershire's case. This doesn't help Birmingham, which is where we were at the moment. And, um, in your pleadings at eighty-nine of the core bundle, you do identify the specific things that you say gave rise to a situation of real and immediate risk, which the defendant knew or ought to have known, could eventuate in Article Three treatment. And you do the same then for Worcestershire. And it's uncertain how this detailed chronology came to be prepared. It's one of the questions I asked. Or whether it's anything more than somebody's reading of the reports and putting some of the reports into a chronology?
Well, it is, it is extracts taken, as I understand it.
On the report?
Was, was the chronology prepared for these proceedings or for the subsequent care proceeding? Uh, it, not, the, the ultimate care proceedings that took place? Or was this chronology prepared for this case, current case?
Well, as I understand it, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm rather vague about it because I, I wasn't involved and I can't take direct instructions about it at the moment. But, um, as I understand it, this was, this chronology was before the judge and was prepared in respect of this application. But the, the, the summary that I referred to in, in the commission was the agreed facts and issues for the care proceedings, which is a, a different document, obviously. But it is, it does, and why it might be of significance is that it, at that stage, it was an agree, it was agreed that all of those events had happened to the claimant. And that's why we would say you would need to have a trial to see, and you would know that there had been care proceedings. The judge knew there had been care proceedings and there would be care proceedings documents available. And in order for the threshold to be reached for the care proceedings, there must have been a series of events that the local authority were relying on, which reached what we would say is a higher test for significant harm in the, in the care proceedings.
Okay. Well, that, that brings me back to a point that troubled me slightly from something you said earlier. It's, it's probably my fault, Miss Campbell, for not getting it right. But is it your case that we don't, we, we shouldn't be looking at what the local authority actually did in this case?
It is, you should be looking at, or all the judge was purporting to look at was could the complaint made by the claimant in the Article Three claim amount to Article, a breach of Article Three? Did it reach the threshold? Did the, the sequence of events that happened to him, including the injuries caused by his mother and the neglect by his mother and the conditions in which he lived over a number of years? And the, including the places he was left by his mother with inappropriate people but dressing him in women's clothing in order for the amusement of his mother's friends? Could that course of conduct amount to a breach of Article Three? Would not, was what the local authority did sufficient? Because that would be a matter for expert evidence in relation to social work conduct. And what could social services have done about it? And what should they have done about it?
But could we not decide, in your case, as straightforwardly as I understood it, that given the incidents in relation to Birmingham, and focus on Birmingham at the moment, that by, by two thousand and eight, Birmingham should have applied for a care order under section thirty-one? And can't we decide on the basis of the material whether or not such a care order could have been obtained on the basis of the material and evidence before the court?
Well, we would say no, because first of all, you can reach the Article Three threshold without having to show that should have, the, the only remedy is not necessarily care proceedings. It's taken any steps to reduce what is happening. In reality, in some cases, care proceedings may be the only course-
But I thought your pleadings were based on removal, and I'd understood that removal meant section thirty-one. Or are you saying that other steps should have been taken? I mean, your pleading does say removal, and it has been treated as section thirty-one. Does it mean something else?
The issue that the judge was deciding, and it's the important issue for which permission to appeal has been granted, is whether the Article Three threshold could be reached by incidents that happened to this claimant that is set out. It's not, and that would be the negligence claim that was withdrawn before the case even got to the judge, as to whether there was negligence in not-
But ju, just to help me a bit further, if you don't mind, our page ninety-one of the core bundle, eight, whilst the claimant was in each defendant's area, each defendant failed and then lined forward to remove the claimant from his mother's care. I'd read that as failed to get a care order under section thirty-one? Or could it involve other things? Just that I understand what the pleaded case is.
The the pleaded case is, relates also to the failing of the local authority. But the judge's decision-
No, no, I'm just focusing very narrowly at the moment. I'm just trying to understand the words, "to remove", and I just need to know whether I've misread them and I've made a mistake. Because I've seen lots of references to those beings should have applied for a care order, or whether I should be careful to read those words on the page more broadly, and it includes failure to take other steps involving removing the claimant for his mother's care.
Well, what I would say about that is that it wouldn't be appropriate to, first of all, to decide on a summary judgment application whether there should have been a care order. And secondly, to enter summary judgment because the care, we couldn't, the judge didn't think we would be able to prove at trial that a care order should have been obtained. What the judge was looking at on the summary judgment application was whether the threshold for Article Three-
Yeah, I've got that, actually, but what do the words then mean?
Well, those are, that's ultimately one of the allegations made in the pleadings as to what should have happened. But that would be a different matter to be looked at at trial.
I understand that's not the matter in the judgment, but just for my own satisfaction, I'm writing thinking then that to remove does mean to seek a care order? Or have I just got it wrong? Anyway.
The local authority has no power, a local authority has no power to remove a child from his or her parents, except with the authority of the court.
Or the permission of the parent.
Or the permission of the parents, quite. So is that, so, so, um, is that, but that is what you're saying?
But it, remove from the mother's care doesn't necessarily, it, it doesn't preclude removal with the mother's consent.
No, it doesn't, you're right, you're right about that. So taking a decision to remove the child either with consent or with, by court order. That's what the court, that's the breach of the operational duty you're alleging in this document.
Yes, but it's now conceded that there was an operational duty. Whether there was a breach or not would be a matter for trial. And of course, what the judge found was there was no operational duty, so you could never get to the point. And that's why that, that aspect of her judgment is important because she's found no operational duty to summary judgment because they can't have even had to make a decision as to whether to take, they had no obligation to even look at a care order or not in terms of this claim because there was no operational duty. So the, the way the judgment is constructed is to separate out the threshold for Article Three as one aspect on which she said she would order for summary judgment because the incidents complained of could never reach the Article Three threshold. The second aspect that she would also look at, but said she didn't need to look at, was did they have an operational duty to do anything about it? And she's made a finding that they didn't even have an operational duty, so she didn't need to look. Nobody, no court would need to look at whether they were in breach of that operational duty because her finding was they didn't even reach, there wasn't even a duty owed. So you don't need to look at breach, you don't know, using the common law terms. But she was using the operational duty as being equivalent to a duty of care and negligence and needing to show a breach.
If we, if we were to allow your appeal on the narrow ground that is now an issue, and in the light of the concession about the operational duty, what do we do about the issue of breach? Is that, that's, are we in a position to decide that? Or should that go back for re-evaluation or evaluation?
We would say summary judgment was inappropriate because it was given on the basis of two mistakes. One, that the Article Three threshold could never be reached on these facts. And two, that the local authority couldn't owe an operational duty in relation to a child in these-
But there was a, forgive me, there, there was, was there not, a third issue? Which the, I think you're telling me, telling us the judge never got to. If there was, if the, if the, if the level of conduct reached the Article Three threshold and there was an operational duty, so that there was an operational duty, then the question, which was unresolved, was whether there was a breach?
But that must be a matter for trial because that-
Why?
Because as was, as was referred to, you would need expert evidence in relation to the social work standard of care on, and what the social workers did. And it was accepted that you never got to that because if there was no operational duty, you didn't even look at what, what the local authority did.
Can we take it in two stages? The judgment of paragraph eighty-six deals with real and immediate risks. And then at the top of page sixty-nine, it says, "There is also no realistic prospect of establishing that they would have applied for a care order." And a breach of Article Three arises when there's a real and immediate risk of treatment which would, if it eventuated, amount to inhuman degrading treatment. And the defendant knew and ought to have known and failed to take steps that reasonably judged it ought to have taken. So that's those four elements together. And I've got to a submission, although it says there is no realistic prospect, you say she wasn't dealing with that. Your second point is that you would need to have expert social work, um, evidence as to whether or not the standard of care is breached. Well, this isn't negligence, and it's meant something different. But you will know, and my lord will know, do you have expert social work cares to whether or not to apply for, um, a significant, a, a social care order? Or does the judge simply hear the facts and decide whether or not it is above the threshold?
If it's in dispute as to what the social workers did was appropriate, you have expert evidence?
Yeah, but this isn't that, though. This is, um, whether or not a social, uh, a section thirty-one order would be granted. And the judge deciding that doesn't have expert evidence, as your judge, she-
Well, they, they would, certainly would in a, in a negligence case. And you would, if it was in dispute in an Article Three case, you would in an Article Three case.
So you don't want expert evidence of that?
But-
I mean, local authority, I think the lord is asking about what happens in the normal care case. And you don't, you don't get expert evidence before a judge saying, I think the local authority's right to apply for a care order here.
Not in care proceedings, but you do if the allegation is that, that a child's been injured by not having been removed and a care order should have been, should have been requested. You would have evidence as to what the local authority should have done. In the, in the H X A type cases, you would always have expert evidence as to whether the child should have been removed. There are in-
But isn't it open to the judge at, at the summary stage to reach a view about that? Without the expert evidence?
We would say not, because how, how could they? Would, without all of the circumstances of the case and all of the issues? And without, and without cross-examination of the social workers? Because what the social worker records as the reason why they don't do something may well not be a good reason for not doing anything. You would need to cross-examine the social worker as to what, you thought this accommodation was appropriate. Even that, even, and you would cross-examine us even though- accommodation was appropriate, even that, even, and you would cross-examine us even though there were feces on the floor and even though, as you can see from the records, the child was complaining they weren't fed and they were left there every weekend. Why, why did you record that this was satisfactory? I mean, that's, that's the nature of contested proceedings. You can't decide those things at summary judgment stage. You've got to cross-examine the people who are making that judgment if you're quarreling with the judgment. And that so there clearly would be other evidence at trial because there would be the social workers across examining something else. And there would be the full care proceedings document. And there would be the, all of the incidents looked at together. And what the judge was doing was isolating some incidents, looking, has the defendants got an answer to that? Yes, I think that's a satisfactory answer, without any opportunity to challenge what the social workers give, or what the defendants are giving in the pleadings or a witness statement as the answer and saying, I think you're going to lose at trial.
What is the expert evidence going to say in this situation? And what, what, what? The ex, the the expert's going to be saying whether the professional decision at the time on each occasion was within, what, what, what's the test? What's the question you're going to ask the expert in the, for the report? Should, should, you, could, it's not should the local authority, should the local authority have applied to take the child away? Could the local authority have applied to take, take the child away? Was the local authority's decision to proceed in the way that it did reasonable? What is the, what is the, what is the test, or what's the question you're asking an expert?
What the expert would need to address in terms of an Article three case was would, would you expect a social worker to take steps to avoid real and immediate risk of harm? And what steps would you have expected them to take, given this series of events to this state? What would you expect them to anticipate in terms of a real and immediate risk of harm? And but that, as I say, is the next stage, and the judge wasn't even getting to that stage, she was doing that on a summary judgment basis without any of the evidence in respect of that. But simply taking at face value the answer the defendant was given, giving to a particular incident, which didn't really answer all of the incidents that.
The difference here, of course, is that your case, your pleaded case is one thing and one thing only. Not that there were other steps they could have taken and they didn't do. That they should have applied for a care order by July two thousand and eight or some date in twenty twelve. That's what you're saying, so it's not a general inquiry as to what else they could have done. You're saying that the only reasonable measure they could have taken was the care order, and if in fact the facts as established don't meet the threshold, what's the expert evidence going to go to then?
Well, it, it, as, as I said, removal from mother's care could have been taken steps to see whether mother was prepared for child to be placed elsewhere. I mean, we know from the facts in the judgment that mother was off camping every weekend and leaving the child in various different places. If she'd been offered support for accommodating the child at different other different accommodation, that might have been something she'd agreed to, but those are all things to investigate at trial.
We know exactly, I mean, you can go through the records, we know exactly when she agreed and when she didn't agree. And we know the child could go into social, into foster care with the uncle, for example, in twenty eighteen, and then with other ones. And then the mother was saying, I'm going to take my consent back. And then she was persuaded not to all of that, we know.
But you still can't make a decision as to whether the thresh, whether the threshold on Article three is reached and then go on to say you're going to lose at trial by conducting effectively a paper exercise in terms of who, who said what in relation to individual incidents. The judge should have separated out and we have to accept that she was wrong to go on to look at, to say there was no operational duty. That's accepted as wrong, so if you take that out of the judgment, what she was, should have been looking at is could these incidents reach the Article three threshold in any of the ways that the Article three threshold can be met?
Can I ask you this, which, forgive me for interrupting you. At what point do you say the Article three threshold was reached? With the first incident in two thousand and five, or at what, or when?
Well, in terms of the litigation, all that we need to show was that it was reached cumulatively by the time that the child was taken, was in fact taken into care.
In two thousand and thirteen. A lot of the time, for the second defendant's case, the child was removed, albeit with the consent of the mother, because the child did go to the uncle and they did for a period of months go to the, so on. So this is why I was wondering, if your case is removal, it's very short periods of time for the second defendant.
Well, it isn't because it starts with the second defendant with the incident with the police taking the child into police custody and then going back, which we would say.
If you look at page eighty-six of your chronology, you would say, looking at the second defendant, fourth of the twelfth when the two little boys were seen on the street by the police. Then there's the later disclosures on the seventh of the thirteenth. But in July thirteen, the claimant was accommodated with an uncle and aunt under section twenty with the consent of the mother, and then moved to further, further placements. So that period wouldn't be a period that you could get Article three damages for in your pleaded case. Then he was returned to the care of his mother, and we've got the documents as to why that was. And then he was removed again in August twenty fourteen. So for the second defendant, on your cases, you've explained it helpfully to me now. We're looking at a short period of about seven months in twenty-two, twenty-thirteen, and a short period in twenty-fourteen.
If you look at the entries on page one oh nine, eighteen oh nine, thirteen disclosure from the claimant to his foster carer.
So which day to, which day? Eighteenth, eighteenth of September.
Didn't think he was ready to have unsupervised contact with his mother because of what happened when his mother hit him. She used to hit him.
Yeah, but there's no risk at the moment of Article three ill treatment because he's not with the mother on the eighteenth of September twenty thirteen, he's with the carer, the foster carer. He's been removed from the mother at that stage.
But he's then placed back.
Yes, so you're looking at the period from when he goes back, which is next year, twenty fourteen, and then you'd have to look at the reasons why he went back.
But looking at whether the Article three threshold is met, the fact that his mother used to throw forks at him and used to hit him all the time, and then tried, the next entry tried to strangle him. First time was the previous year, the second time was his summer just before coming into care.
Forgive me, where precisely are you reading from there? That's a, that date. Yes, but my lord's right, at this point, the child's in foster care. So
But those are
And the child is then returned after extensive work in May, isn't it, twenty fourteen?
Well, yes, but.
And it then breaks down again fairly quickly, doesn't it?
Given that history, to say that it, that there isn't a real and immediate risk of harm placing the child back with the mother without an investigation as to what work had been done and whether she was going to stop doing what she'd done, is a, is a clear illustration of why there was a real and immediate risk. By that time, they'd got these accounts. They thought it was serious enough to remove, but replaced, placed back again in the light of those incidents. How you can decide on a summary judgment that the, there wasn't a real and immediate risk of, of harm reaching the Article three threshold when the child had described those sort of repeated incidents of harm from his mother? Does seem very precipitant in terms of what the circumstances of the case were, what harm he was subjected to, and what, whether it was appropriate to place him back again when, when you, by then know of all those incidents. And each of those incidents would on the, on the cases reach the threshold, but certainly cumulatively over the period of years would reach the threshold for Article three. If you look at the, compared to cases where there are isolated incidents of beating of a, in one view, less severe nature than that. And when you have to look at all the circumstances of the case to do that on a summary judgment basis is, is inappropriate because it's exactly what summary judgment is not intended to do, which is to take a view as to who's likely to be, whose view is likely to be accepted at trial.
This pattern, you know, is very common, Miss Cumbell. There are lots and lots of cases very much like this. Where there are isolated, and I'm, you're appreciating, I'm speaking in my own experience in the family division over many years in practice and on the bench, and there are lots of cases where the local authorities are involved periodically over a number of years and have to make decisions about what to do. It, is it relevant that the consequence of the commission would be that potentially a very large number of these cases would lead, could lead to claims under Article three?
Well, that that might be thought to be a good thing if it's a disintentive to allowing children to be suffering in that, in that way. It can't, it cannot be condemned that children are suffering in the way even just, you know, described in these records without anything being done to protect them. That's the whole point of Article three, is that it, is that the there should be protection for children suffering in that way. The fact that it's common is very, very unfortunate, but it doesn't mean that nothing should be done about it, or that the local authorities shouldn't be held accountable for it.
The local authorities don't do, these cases don't do nothing, but they have a hierarchy of responses. A child is maybe a child in need for a while, and then the next level is that under a protection plan. And then ultimately proceedings, proceedings are a last resort. Because the higher courts, higher than this court, Supreme Court and the European Court emphasize that you only take children away from their parents as a last resort permanently, you only take them away permanently where all else fails.
But that.
That's what the European Court has said.
But it doesn't mean that you, that local authorities shouldn't have to account for children being left with that level of abuse and physical harm from the facts. It can't, cannot be condemned that children are living in conditions where they're eating off the floor and where they're being dragged up stairs and beaten, having forks thrown at them.
Yeah.
As, as not reaching the Article three threshold. Whether the case would succeed at trial is a matter for hearing all of the evidence, hearing from the social workers, why other steps weren't taken, why this was considered acceptable level of care to leave the child with the mother. Those are issues for, for trial, they're not issues for summary judgment.
Okay, can I just come back to the point I was, can you say precisely when you say the threshold was crossed in this, in this case? When do you say the Article three threshold was crossed?
Well, we would say that any of the incidents which caused harm reached the threshold, but cumulatively, they certainly reached the threshold. But it's a matter for trial and the, and that's the difficulty in looking at it in summary judgment, is that it is difficult to say which of the incidents, only having the very stark outline details that the judge had, which.
She had the social service records, I keep coming back to that. She had the social services records, and if you wanted the pages that were missing, they could have put them in, and the judge says the social workers are not going to remember any more about this after ten years. And they really can't remember any more about them. So all you're ever going to have is not just the chronologies, but for Birmingham, for example, the social service records.
And what we quarrel with is the judge saying, on the basis of those records, the Article three threshold could not be reached so that I can give summary judgment against the claimant. Because reading that castle of events, it is, you know, in human terms, very hard to see. And looking at the cases, which we deal with in some detail in the discussion, I'm not going to go through them all, but when one makes the comparison with the cases, this is, we would say, starkly within the Article three level of threshold, at least the threshold could be reached if the accounts which are relied on by the claimant are found to be right, and they can't just be ruled out by looking at what the defendants say. And that's what we quarrel with, the judge is saying, I can say in a summary judgment, the threshold cannot be reached colored by, and anyway, there isn't an operational duty in relation to the local authority to prevent Article three inhuman punishment, inhuman treatment, degrading treatment, or, you know. Each of the incidents could be said to be either degrading treatment or inhuman treatment, or degrading punishment, or degrading treatment, but she didn't look at those separately. She ruled them out as being incapable of reaching the threshold. So can I just take, go through?
I'm sorry, we've, we've interrupted you a little, Miss Cumbell, and I'm conscious that you were brave enough to say you'd be two hours, and I, I was skeptical about that because I knew we would inevitably have questions given our interest in the case. So forgive, forgive us, and I think we'll let you carry on now and submit, and submit as you want.
To refer briefly to the, to the cases and the fact that in, in the cases, what is emphasized is that the, all the circumstances of the, of the case and the nature and content of the treatment, the age of the child, and remember, this is a child starting off at two years old, and the course of, the complaints are made over a long period of time and are complaints in relation to the combination of not being properly fed, being physically punished, being left with inappropriate sexual offenders, being subjected to inappropriate sexual behavior, being left wandering the streets. Those, looking at the authorities, which we summarize in paragraph five as the, as an argument at page one hundred and seventy-two, would certainly need to be looked at to see if they reached that threshold. And the real and immediate risk is, is not the same test as the significant harm test in the Children Act. We would say it's a lower threshold because it's. We would say it's a lower threshold because it's a, a risk. And, and a risk is not, not necessarily going to materialize, but if there is a, a real and immediate risk, that is sufficient for the threshold, uh, to be met.
So lower threshold than significant harm or a likelihood of significant harm, is it? Is that, sorry, did I get that right?
Yes, because not, not, not all the cases where there is a breach of Article Three will be cases where there needs to be a care. But the, um, the points that are relevant are the duration of the treatment. So I'm, I'm looking at paragraph five, six of our skeleton argument. Duration of the treatment, physical or mental effects. Some cases, the age, sex and status of health are fixed. And the... obviously, the, the cases cover a range of different situations, including the conditions in which asylum seekers are held. But the, um... denial of shelter or food and most basic necessities of life. This child was being complaining that he wasn't being fed during the day, and he was being left to wander the streets. And when taken back home, the police found it so, the premises so inappropriate, they had to take him into police custody. Difficult to see how that in itself can't reach the Article Three threshold in terms of lack of shelter, lack of, lack of food and inappropriate conditions. Then the, you know, summary of the, of the cases, um, so isolated, more isolated instances such as Witanga in Belgium, five-year-old detained and unaccompanied in an asylum for two months pending deportation. That was separation from his mother. So the comparison the judge made with the cited cases doesn't take into account that all of the circumstances need to be looked at and that, uh, in order to give summary judgment, she appears to have been satisfied that these circumstances taken together couldn't amount to inhuman degrading treatment of any of the types. And I pointed to the, her, um, analysis of the Tara case to show she seemed to think that if you ruled out one, you were ruling out all of the Article Three criteria. So does, we would say, show a misunderstanding of how the Article Three criteria should be applied. And that she wasn't looking at could be incidents cumulatively come within the Article Three criteria altogether. Obviously, each of the cases is, is different. Of looking at the more isolated incidents in the cases, it's difficult to see how putting together all of these incidents, the Article Three threshold can't be reached.
But your case is that it, is that it was reached in each of these incidents. Each of the incidents relied on here by itself crossed the threshold.
Well, that's the first case, but the second case is cumulatively, they certainly did. I'm not, not saying that if I'm wrong that any of the incidents on their own reached the criteria, then I haven't shown that, that the judge should have found. I mean, it's not even that she should have found that the criteria, the threshold was reached. She shouldn't have found on a summary judgment that it wasn't reached, is all I need to tell.
Yes.
And that's, that's what we complain about, is that it wasn't appropriate for summary judgment to say that this, that there cannot have been a violation of Article Three in relation to this child, and I can decide that just looking at what the defendants say about the individual incident. Because that's not an appropriate use of some, of summary judgment. And the summary judgment cases are generally a construction or a legal point that cannot be argued, whereas a point that depends on all the circumstances of the case is by definition unsuitable for summary judgment. Because you cannot look at all the circumstances of the case on the summary judgment application.
May I just ask one point on that submission? I think you submitted to my lord that Article Three, because of the risk of, of harm, would inevitably be sometimes a lower threshold than the threshold for removal.
Yes.
And you also submitted, I think in answer to my Lord, Lord Justice Lewis, that it would never be appropriate to entertain and on a summary judgment application what a local authority had done. That would need expert evidence and more exploration of, of the facts. Now, if both those propositions, all those propositions are right, that would mean inevitably in a case where a child hadn't been removed, perhaps for good reason, there would have to be a full trial of the matter.
Well, in theory, but in practice, of course, when the parties look at these circumstances, the cases will tend to settle. There won't be a trial in every case, or what we're saying is it was, it's inappropriate to rule out cases of this severity on a summary judgment and that, um, what needs to be properly addressed is all of the issues. And then if a settlement can't be reached, well, then there will be a trial. But in practice, it's very rare that there's a trial in any of these cases. I mean, that after D and East Berkshire, before T and Pool, thousands of cases would have settled, and there's only one or two reported cases. Um, and in terms of Article Three, which has been used for an alternative, almost all of the cases until this judgment saying you could have summary judgment and look at the, the threshold on summary judgment, um, most of the cases would settle once everybody looked at the social services records and the medical evidence in relation to the effect and, um... So it's, it's sort of harsh to say, well, saying it's wrong to give summary judgment in this case is inviting huge amount of contested litigation at trial, any more than in any other case. If, if you don't have summary judgment, you're inevitably going to have a trial. Because that's not the reality. The reality is in almost every case, you won't have a child, a trial, you'll have a settlement.
Thank you.
But in theory, obviously, if you don't have summary judgment, there is a, a prospect of a trial. But it's looking at these cases with a trial, you will get a better idea of what cumulative circumstances that do reach the Article Three threshold and what... Um, and that's where you will look at what social services should do about children left in the, with this kind of plight. And it is something that ought to be addressed by the courts because, you know, it can't be right that children are suffering this level of abuse. And it may be common, and I understand that it's common, and that's, that's the ill that's trying to be addressed by litigation in a sense, is that it shouldn't be common and it should be addressed. Because it, it creates a problem in society if it's allowed to continue on the basis that it's common that children are, are left with this plight. And that's what the European Court are addressing in saying that there is an obligation for the, the government to have a, have an obligation, obligation to prevent it. That's the protection, that's the very protection that Article Three is there for. Can I leave my learning friend to deal with the additional material? Because it may be relevant to, to look at that.
Do you want to do that now?
That might be appropriate. I, I do ask your orders to look at the, the cases summarized in the skeleton. I'm not sure it's helpful to turn to it.
Do you want just to star the ones you particularly rely on? Hang on, 173, is that where I should be?
Yes, the ones that... Obviously, Tara is relevant because we think it's being misunderstood. Dead in the U K, I've already referred to. Um, the, um, Limbula, which is tab 17, it is, uh, Lord Bingham describing the threshold of treatment is inhuman degrading if it's serious, serious to a certain extent, it denies the most basic needs of any human being. And we would say that, uh, in this case, there were essential needs that were not met for this child. In the Chief Counselor of 2009, tab 23, is, uh, there's a passage from Thomas Hale at paragraph seven describing how the European Court has taken particular note of the vulnerability of children, obligations of the state to protect people from inhuman or degrading treatment, and the special vulnerability of children in that context. And that's again, the plight of the children in Caen in France. So the cases that affect children are obviously particularly relevant. And when one looks at the cases on the reaching the threshold, almost the only case that doesn't reach the threshold is the Costello and Roberts case, which was the corporal punishment with the, with the slipper.
Was DMP, wasn't there, didn't reach the threshold? DMP did not constitute an after-free breach?
I'm sorry, I...
DMP didn't constitute an after-free breach as well.
Um... Yeah. But I think almost without exception, the, the other ones did. And the, the, um, Ian, who's comfortable, Royal Aster Constabulary, did reach the Article Three threshold, but that was in the end decided on the, on the fact the police had taken reasonable steps in waiving the rights of the children to have free access to school to the rights of citizens to be protected. But that is the second stage, not whether the threshold is reached.
Can I ask why you say the second stage is never appropriate for summary judgment?
Because that wasn't what the judge was looking at in this case. And it's difficult to see how the second stage could be dealt with on the summary judgment application if you haven't looked at, if you haven't cross-examined those who are seeking to justify. If you've got to, if you've got to a point where the threshold has been reached, then given, uh, the, um, the fact that you can't ever justify an Article Three breach, you have got to look at what was done and why it isn't an operational breach. And we would say that it's obvious that the judge didn't get to doing that exercise because she had made a finding that the couldn't possibly, that the local authorities didn't just have an operational breach. And that is so fundamental to how she was addressing the issues in relation to Article Three. So I'll leave my learning friend to deal with the additional material, unless there's any other issues.
Thank you very much, Miss Gumbel. Yes?
My lords, it, it's an application to admit as fresh evidence two forms of the threshold document.
The original threshold document and the agreed.
Precisely, as prepared by the first respondent in the family court proceedings. And what I'd like to do, if I may, is just point my lords to just a few points in those documents upon which we pay particular reliance, and then address you more generally on why we say...
So this is in the supplemental bundle?
Yes, it's tab 14, and the, the first version from the outset of the, um, proceedings is 14A.
Did, did you have them before you had the hearing before the judge?
Yes, we're certain that we had the care proceedings bundle, which of course would have included significant information far beyond these documents. And we think the best of our understanding that we had the social care, the online social care records themselves that are on that.
You had the care proceedings bundle, and that would have included these two documents and the social, the underlying Worcestershire social care records?
Well, actually, I, I can show you some references to underlying documents in the threshold document, which, which will give my lord a sense of the sort of...
If I understand that, but just that I understand what you're saying as opposed to what you can back up. You're saying you've had these two documents, the agreed evidence, that you've had the care proceedings bundle, and that would have included the Worcestershire social care records?
Uh, well, what I said is it would have included a wealth of information because of course it's provided in the family court with the evidence it needs to make a care order. Um, I don't have any evidence in front of me to sort of give my lord...
It would have included the significant old material of social care reports then?
Yes, we have to recognize that.
And you had that in the social, in 2017, did you?
Certainly before the...
Before the trial, before, before Mrs. Deputy Highsmith, Director, over here.
On a small point, I'm just thinking about whether we need to look at both documents for the purposes of your claim. Isn't the first document one we should focus on? Obviously, the second document will be the relevant one in the care proceedings ultimately. But in terms of, if we're looking at, at the...
In a sense, yes, because the first document indicates what was known or believed by the first respondent. But I, I do say in fact that the second version is relevant in another sense and that it reflects in essence agreed findings in another court. And it's quite striking if these proceedings are resolved on a summary judgment in ignorance of the fact that a care order was made in the family court. in ignorance of the fact that a care order was made in the family court on an agreed basis. And that agreed basis being of significant relevance, I'm going to say, to the claim. Um, in, in relation to the first version at fourteen A, from the outset of the care proceedings, there's one entry in particular that I would like to draw my Lords' attention, and that's at Roman numeral ten. "In July two thousand and thirteen, the mother physically abused A B whereby she hit him with a hairbrush so hard it broke, grabbed him around his throat, pushed him onto the bed where he banged his head on the bunk bed, slapped his back, scratched his arm and sat on his head. He stated that he had been beaten before when he was younger, she had kicked him, strangled him, sat on him before. He stated that when children's services were involved, his mother didn't hit him, but when they were not involved, she did. He did not want to return home but to live with his paternal nan. Both boys were moved, that's the siblings, were moved into the care of their aunt and uncle as a result." The sibling stated that he had been smacked, pinched and pushed by her mother. A B received treatment for his scratches at school.
Is this, is this, this is a, an expanded version, is it, of the incident, um, summarised by the judge at paragraph eight, Roman two?
Precisely, and, and in the pleadings, there's a short summary of this incident. Um, but, but this document, as my Lord can see, adds rather more significance to colour. Which can be relevant when one is making.
Where, do we know when the details set out in Roman ten became known to the local authority?
Well, well, we know actually quite clearly, um, what's stated in that entry. It says that A B received treatment for his scratches at school and showed the social worker on the fifteenth of July two thousand and thirty, a number of red scratches on his arm and a red mark on his neck. A slight scratch beneath his jawline and a red scratch on his chin.
I wondered when I was looking at these and comparing the two, whether the version that appears in ten was based on information which came to the local authorities' attention at a later date? Is that what happened?
Well, it doesn't appear to be, um, in my submission on reading it. Of course, that might be the sort of thing that's examined at trial. But what does seem to be tolerably clear from that entry is that certainly of July two thousand and thirteen, well over a year before an interim care order was sought, he was receiving treatment at school for a number of scratches on his arm and a red mark on his neck.
Yes, well, those points strike a chord with what's said, uh, by the judge in that paragraph I've just mentioned, sort of scratches.
And what happened then is that he was in section twenty care, as I understand it, with the consent of the mother. He was with the aunt and uncle, they could only cope with a week because they had work commitments. And then there were two, I think, subsequent placements. So in terms of what you, you submitted on, on removal, it does seem as if the whole pleading, despite what's been said, was actually aimed at interim care orders and care orders. And that removal from care was actually meant to be that. Because if your case is that he should have been taken away from his mother, he was on the thirteenth, on July, in July two thirteen.
My Lord, there, there is a very significant difference in my submission between a temporary removal with a view to reunification with mother and seeking a permanent removal. And, and it's important not to alight those different points, they're very different points. Um, conceptually, um, in our submission, is there at this point a real and immediate risk? Or for summary judgment, arguably, a real and immediate risk of inhumane integrating treatment? Um, in our submission, quite clearly, yes. The question then is whether the response was reasonable. Was it reasonable to have a short-term placement with family before returning?
But there's no real immediate risk because the child is not with the mother. And two things have to happen, either the mother says, I want the child back and withdraws consent. Or they decide, some state, they just say that they're going to put the child back. So in terms of, is there a real and immediate risk? If you're saying removal is broader than an interim care order, there is no immediate risk, which is what Article three is all about. That's what I'm having trouble understanding.
My, my Lord, firstly, there is a real and immediate risk when these issues arise. And inevitably, it would be argued at trial that that, the reasonable response to that would be seeking a care order.
That's four, and you don't want to get to stage four according to Miss Gumbel. The first question is, is there a real and immediate risk, one, of treatment which if it were to eventuate would be Article three severe enough? Three, did they know or ought they to have known? And four, what was the reasonable response to the circumstances? But if in fact the child is not with the mother, how is there a real and immediate risk? There'd be a real and immediate risk on your case if it's handed back, but that's not the situation.
Respectfully, my Lord, that's a slightly artificial way of, of looking at it. Because when, when A B is at school showing, showing social work that he's got scratches on his arm and on his neck, and it's year eight of concerns being reported, um, there certainly is a real and immediate risk.
Of what? Of the child being harmed if it's with the mother?
Yes.
So if it's not with the mother, there is no real immediate risk, that's the simple point.
But, but what should happen in response? Whether it should be short-term placement or whether it should be a permanent removal if necessary by care proceedings? Is a question which goes to breach. But then in, in any event, my, my Lord, I say it does because it goes to the reasonableness of the response. But in any event, when A B is then returned to the care of his mother, the very same issues.
That's a separate question, and then we move on to what they did in May twenty fifteen, I think, yeah.
Can, can I just ask a question on the factual detail, the reasonableness of the response? Obviously, a lot of pleadings, a lot of details, there should have been a removal. There was no expert evidence adduced on either side before the judge on the summary judgment, was there?
No, but it was stated on the claimant's behalf that there would be a wish to induce expert evidence at trial.
Right.
Expert social work evidence. And of course, that expert social work evidence would, would, would look at issues such as, could it have been a reasonable response to have a short-term placement with other family members in July two thousand and thirteen? Rather than seeking.
Um, without getting into any impermissible privileges, but there's been case management, at least to get to the stage of the strike-out summary judgment application. Was there any identification of experts on either side or disciplines?
I would have to come back to you.
Okay, sorry, sorry to ask you, it was only a factual.
I, I thought the reports that were referred to as expert reports were to do with psychological injury, not to do with social work. I thought it was Professor Julian Evans and Professor Fox.
Uh, both, so there'll be expert evidence both as to the impact upon A B a, a, and independent social work evidence as to the reasonableness.
Yeah, but that wasn't referred to in the pleadings, was it, the social, independent social work? I thought you said that the expert evidence was.
Referred to in judgments.
Oh, judgment not pleading, that's right, yes.
So it's recorded in the judgment that, that in response to the question, what further evidence will be for the court of trial? One part of the answer to that was independent social work evidence to look at precisely this sort of issue.
Yes.
And my Lords, if you look at what, what actually, um, Miss Obe has done, is to decide that the response to this rather striking incident in July two thousand and thirty was reasonable.
Well, can I just, forgive me, Mr Jacob, just focus on that? Where does this summary that the judge have, eight two, eight, paragraph eight, Roman two in her judgment, where does that come from?
I think it comes from, um, the short summary in the particulars of play. That's, um, so page eighty-six, if my Lord would like to see it.
Right.
So at the, at the very bottom of page eighty-six, it's thirteenth of July, you should see the short summary. But for completeness, my Lords, there, there was a fairly substantial amount of detail from the, the threshold document in the longer chronology. So you'll see that.
Yes, I, I've, I've noticed that. That contains some, but not all, of what's in the threshold document.
A significant part of it.
And then just looking at what the judge says about this incident later on in the judgment, she doesn't really settle there, that's about it, at eighty-two. Does she?
No, she doesn't at all, in my.
Whereas, forgive me, sorry, she's, she's, I'm just thinking aloud. She's spoken quite a lot, she's fleshed out the allegations before that, earlier in the judgment, but she doesn't do this over here.
No, and, and.
Just says, follow that instant they were removed.
Precisely, but for the reasons I've said out, that's, that's an error.
Sorry, just say, why is it an error?
It, it's an error because that, that is a judgment as to the reasonableness of the response, really. It's to decide that seeking a, a temporary placement elsewhere is, is reasonable, is not a breach of duty.
Is that the, sorry, is that, again, it's me, I'm sure. Are you basing that submission on the word resulted? Is that what you're, or is there more to it than that?
Well, I, I say, conceptually firstly, was there, was there awareness of a real and immediate risk? And if a child i- in year eight of reports is saying, I've got scratches on my arm, on my neck, and so on, as you've seen in the vivid description, they are, the authority is aware of a real and immediate risk. And I say that however it's phrased at paragraph eighty-two by the judge, conceptually, the reasonableness of the response to that is a question of whether there is a breach of the operation of duty.
The problem that I've got is, I'm looking at the, the case, what it says, and they failed to take measures within the scope of their powers, which judged reasonably might have been expected to avoid that risk. Now, if the child is not in, if the risk is that the mother is abusing physically the child and the child is not in the care of the mother because it's gone first and then to further foster placements, that risk has been avoided. And it, it, it would still help me, and I know I've come back to this a couple of times, but I'm having real trouble just in being absolutely sure in my own mind that the pleading was, should have had a removal by way of interim care order or would be sufficient to avoid the risk if there was an interim care order or removal physically from the environment where the risk was said to generate.
My Lord, in my submission, the, the risk hasn't been avoided. It's only been avoided in the shortest of senses.
Yes, I understand that, but that's a question of, you put it, it, the question of whether they failed to assess the measures within the scope of the powers which judged reasonably might have been expected to avoid the risk. But we're Article three, and you're switching then from Article three, you're saying, well, that'd work for a short term, but long term they have to do something. But since it's real and immediate risk, real and immediate, if there isn't an immediate risk because they're with foster carers, the immediate risk isn't going to happen until they go back in some way.
If, if my Lord looks at it in this way, the child is at real and immediate risk of what? And one thing he is at real and immediate risk of is prolonged neglect.
Yeah, but not if he's in the care of the foster carers.
Well, if he's, if he is having a short-term placement as you in section twenty with foster care, he's not protected from prolonged neglect.
Yes, he is, he's protected from neglect in the short term. And whether or not he gets returned will determine whether or not there's prolonged, uh, risk. A number of things might happen, he might not be returned, the mother might be. So the immediate risk, it's real and immediate risk. I, I, I get the slight sense that you're switching from Article three risk, which is of inhuman integrating treatment, to determining which would be the best long-term solution. And those are different, aren't they?
Not if I'm right, my Lord, that that is a question for whether there's a breach of duty. Um, so the real immediate risk is there, it's triggered. What response would there was and whether it was reasonable, whether it was reasonable to have a short-term placement rather than care proceedings? Is a question of whether that, that is a reasonable preventative measure, as is the phrase, for example, from Z E U K. And at trial, in my submission, it's plainly arguable that in those circumstances, given the severity, given the prolonged nature, a short-term placement is not a reasonable preventative measure.
Well, this is slightly off what we're focusing on, but just to take you up on that, when the child was accommodated with the aunt and uncle and then in foster care, was it always known that it was going to be short-term? Or was it just open-ended?
My Lord, that's a very valid point, but it's precisely the sort of point that needs to be determined with reference to records. And of course, have in mind that in relation to the first respondent, there were no records at all. Um, it's the sort of point that needs to be considered at trial.
I thought you told me, that's what I've been asking again repeatedly. I'm so sorry if I not made it clear. I've written it down, had the care proceedings been done, that would have included the material, social care records for the first respondent, I thought.
My Lord, yes, I was referring to what information was before the judge.
Yeah, but that you didn't put them before the judge. You had the evidence, but you didn't put it.
Um, can I? Anything else you want to add on that point? Because I've got another, I'm sorry to, or barge.
No, no, not to trespass into anything else.
No, 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 I think I've understood it.
If we're focusing on whether we should allow this evidence in, which is really your principal, primary point. You've shown us, um, you reminded us of what's in the chronology appended to the P O C five, P O C five, which is sort of halfway between what's in the summary and the judgment and of the threshold document. So the judge, the judge had the chronology.
Miss Gumbel referred to sort of three categories of evidence. One, matters that the judge did take into account as evident in her judgment. Two, matters she had before her but didn't appear to.
Were not referred to in the judge.
Yes, and, and so that would be the entry we've just discussed in the chronology.
Yeah.
And then the third category is that which appears in the threshold.
Let me just look again at the chronology.
It's, um, really one oh.
Eight.
One oh seven and one oh eight, yeah, for the main ones at the top of one oh eight. And it does have the detail there about being grabbed around his throat.
It doesn't have the hairbrush.
No.
But it has the grab round the throat.
Pushing onto the bed, banging his head. And then also the historic reports.
And the young, uh, yes, so she had, so really, you say, the threshold document is just as it were, well, the threshold document is only another different form of abstract from the evidence.
Yes. It has, there's, there's sort of degrees of colour, if I can put it like that. A fair amount of the colour is in the chronology.
Most of it, actually, it's just the hairbrush, isn't it?
Certainly in relation to the July two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, that was the one you focused on?
Um, yes, um, on, on the, on the first version of the threshold document. And then if I could take my Lords to the second version, which is the agreed matters.
Before we go to the, actually, eighty, paragraph eighty, the judgment, eighty little two does seem to be a summary of that, although not with all the details. Mother pushed him, sat on him, bumped his head, uh, doesn't say where, and scratched his arm and neck with fingernails.
That's really what will appear, uh, right at the beginning of the judgment, in eight two.
It's very similar to that.
Yes. Now, you want to take us to the agreed?
Yes, so the agreed document, and of course, as Miss Gumbel has emphasised, these matters are relevant definitively, but just to pick out a full number of points. Um, at Roman numeral I, so five I, of page one six eight.
Right.
It was agreed that due to mother's inability to cope and numerous concerns regarding uh, the boy's welfare, that there had been extensive, um, social services involvement concerning significant neglect and physical, emotional.
That's an expanded version of five one on one six four.
It, it is.
And this will have been negotiated by the lawyers.
Matters which can be agreed so that the, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the agreed threshold before the court.
Um, at Roman numeral two, you'll see that there's reference to witnessing domestic violence and there's reference to a chronology from October two thousand and eleven.
Again, that's an expanded version of what's in the.
Yes.
Uh, original threshold.
Yes, a, and also going back to my Lord, Lord Justice Lewis's question about further evidence, you'll see references to social work statement, interview of the mother, interview of other persons, um, and interview of A B, all of which is the sort of information that would be before the court at, at trial. And then at Roman numeral six.
Before we leave three, don't mention the name of the person, because we're being livestreamed. That, there was the one incident that we know of when the two little boys were on the street at ten forty-five at night, and that was the person who did that. But there were other incidents, are there, where the person was left with that person? Because it only says in particular in April twenty twelve, and I've not seen anything else to suggest that it was more than once.
Yes, I think Miss Gumbel referred to A B describing his mother going on camping trips periodically and being left for several weekends.
With that person?
With that person.
Is that in the chronology? Because I haven't seen that anywhere else.
Well, I'm, I'm sure we can find that reference.
Okay, do it after lunch, yeah.
Can I just pick, I'm sorry to pick you up and go back to the point I made about which of these two documents is, is, is relevant for the purposes of this claim and appeal. The ultimate threshold will have been the basis of a negotiation between the parties in the care proceedings. And the local authority, some of it will be, is clarified, for example, five one, and some of it is omitted, for example, I think five four and one six five is omitted from the ultimate document, because the local authority, I'm guessing now that this is what will have happened, agreed to drop it because it was objected to by the parents, and they didn't, likely they didn't need it for the, to get the orders they wanted. So if we're looking at what was in the local authority's mind, which is, I think, the point of admitting this document, I do think it's the first version, which is the, which is the relevant one. And I'm wondering whether, if you want, you've drawn our attention to five, Roman ten or one six five, is there any other particular one which you want to rely on?
Yes, if, if I may, and I, I understand the point, but actually, it, it's answered to a, to a large degree in the entry itself, so for example, at, at six and four, there seems to be a net number of the, an error in.
Sorry, say again?
At, at Roman numeral six and Roman numeral four, there seems to be an error in the numbering.
Sorry, not with you now, are you on page one six five or?
Oh, one six nine.
One six nine, sorry.
Sorry, this is, this is still in the.
In the fore one.
Document, and, and just, just to answer your point, my lord.
Well, the numbering, yes.
Number, Roman numeral six.
We've lost a five.
We've lost a five, yes.
That was.
Roman numeral six, the, the mother and another male have caused A B and the sibling significant emotional harm by exposing them to their sexual activities.
Yes.
And, and so on, and, and there's reference there to the chronology, fifteenth of July, two thousand and thirteen. And, and you will see entries to that effect in the chronology, so those are matters, my lord, which there is a wince of at the time. And then the only other matter, there's a great.
Sorry to be difficult, I, 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 I thought that was the case, and I looked for the fifteen seven thirteen one, and I couldn't see anything there.
There may have been an error in the paper, but my lord, if you look at, actually, there's an entry on the twenty-first of May, two thousand and fourteen, of page one one.
Great, page one one?
Page one one one, entry on twenty-first of May, two thousand and fourteen. So that, that does, perhaps an error in the data.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm on one one one, I just am not looking, which entry again?
Twenty-first of May, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, right, but that suggests that it was, because we're going to talk about dates and cumulative effects, and what did they know when, because it's new or ought to have known. Is it not relevant to know whether it's May twenty fourteen or July twenty thirteen?
It, it may well be, and I, I go back to the point, my lord, that these are precisely the sort of matters to be considered at, at trial. The point really on the summary judgment is that when one looks at the sorts of issues that were coming to the attention of the authority.
This isn't a matter of cross-examining thing. It says that the document, which has probably got the word chronology on it, says one date, and you've shown us a document with a chronology that's got a different date. I'm not sure what evidence we're talking about there, I just want to know what it's referring to. Is it referring to this one, or is it referring to something else, or do we not know?
I, I, I don't know that, I mean, the, the chronology which reference is made there would be a separate chronology.
It's a separate one, not this one, so there's no parting trying to marry the two up.
No, no, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr Jacobs, this often happens when junior counsel blithely follows on. I noticed that in the agreed version of the July twenty thirteen incident, it's much reduced, and it is in fact closer to the pleaded version. So where does that leave us?
Well, it, it's actually your point, my lord.
You rely on my point, yes.
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 The, the, the only other point on the agreed chronology goes to the impact of these events on A B, which is of course one relevant factor, and that's a Roman numeral fifteen.
Which, which.
So page one seventy, so this is in the agreed threshold. A B and his brother are beyond parental control due to lack of nurturing and care received from their mother and her neglect of them. The harm they have suffered has resulted in displaying extremely challenging behaviour, including inappropriate sex, which high levels of distress and aggression, refusal to engage in disruptive behaviour in school. And you'll see that the brother also exhibited significant mental health issues. And so one relevant factor for the purposes of Article Three threshold is the very significant impact upon these events, of these events, the claimant. My lords, in terms of why we say you should exercise your discretion to admit this evidence, the, the power is the general one set out in Rule twenty-one of Part fifty-two, the subsequent rules. The court shouldn't permit fresh evidence unless the appeal court orders otherwise, it's a broad discretion. And we recognise, of course, and I don't think there's any disputism to this, that the Ladd and Marshall criteria remain relevant, but they are not determinative. I, I, I say that we quite easily need a second and third criteria. The second one being, does it have an important influence on the case, though it need not be decisive, I've already addressed you on that. The third, is it an incredibly credible document, though it need not be incontrovertible? And it clearly, they clearly are, no, credible documents, not least, as they are documents prepared by the first respondent in the form of cases that are making of a care order. I can see, my lord, Lord Justice Lewis, I'm leafing through the provided, I don't know if it'd be helpful to have a reference for, for where the commentators refer to cases on the Ladd and Marshall criteria being relevant but not decisive. And if, my lord.
Don't worry about it, it'll be there somewhere, don't worry.
It's paragraph, it's page one eight zero four. For example, towards the bottom of that page, third paragraph from the bottom, despite Webster, the Ladd and Marshall test should not be treated to the sole guiding principles. It is admitted that Lord Justice Richards struck the right note in the Shira case. The court must, of course, seek to give effect to the overriding objective of doing justice. But in that respect, the pre-CPR cases, including that of Marshall, remain of relevance and powerful persuasive authority. So I recognise, of course, that they are, are relevant, but as I say simply, that they are not determinative.
Because this was evidence that existed beforehand, and which you could, and indeed under the summary proceeding one analysis, you should have put in if you wanted to rely on it, that's the puzzle about this, not a strikeout where you look at the pleadings, it's summary judgment, but you say it doesn't matter.
Well, well, two points on that. Firstly, my lord, one shouldn't lose sight of the fact that the first respondent itself hadn't put in any evidence. So it wasn't in fact the case that the first respondent was saying, this is your pleaded case, but we are showing the court this evidence which undermines it. All the first respondent really was saying is that on your pleaded case, you don't get past summary judgment, and, and that, that is relevant in my submission. I mean, I, I would accept that if the, the first Ladd and Marshall criteria evidence could not have been obtained for use at trial was determinative, then the application would realistically fail. But it is not, and, and my lords need to apply the overriding objective and seek to resolve these proceedings fairly and justly. And I rely briefly at just on four matters. First, it is the first respondent's own documents or documents, they're not being asked to confront something of which they have no knowledge. Second, in our submission, they had an obvious and particular relevance. And it is odd and unjust for a high court to grant summary judgment on a claim in ignorance of agreed findings of fact before the family court. Third, it's the very real prejudice to the claimant if the effect is to preclude him from indicating his Article Three fundamental rights. And of course, the court, the courts want to encourage an onus on parties to reduce the evidence of first instance, and we do recognise that, but that does have to be balanced too against the prejudice to the, the appellant. And, and fourth, one factor in considering summary judgment is whether further investigation may affect the outcome of the case. But it is not in the interest of justice to undertake guesswork as to what further investigation may reveal when a document can readily be produced, revealing at least a part of the answer.
Thank you.
My lords, unless I can assist.
Oh, yes.
Ah, yes, and just one point of, my lord, Lord Justice Lewis was asking, asking about the, the, the weekends points, and whether.
Whether it's one weekend or whether it's a number of weekends.
So if my, my lord looks at page one oh four of the supplementary bundle. Oh, the core bundle, I'm so sorry.
It can't be, that's, that's actually one oh four.
Apologies, one oh four of the core bundle.
Of the core, yeah.
In the middle of the page, there's an entry on the tenth, a second entry for the tenth of April. There's a summary of an A B interview conducted with A B. In the second paragraph, A B said that they stay with the individual every weekend to give mum a break. And they'd also live with her for two weeks previously.
Thank you very much, Mr Jacobs. Well, Fox, would you like to deal briefly with that, the fresh evidence part, if that would be convenient? Before we adjourn?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll endeavour to be brief, in the supplemental bundle.
Yes.
We have a skeleton argument dealing with the point of page one hundred and seventy-eight.
Yes.
And we there set out the reasons why we submit that the court should not admit this further evidence. In short, the, the application that you're now hearing was made in March twenty twenty-two. The family court papers were released by order of the thirtieth of August two thousand and seventeen. And the defendants, the Worcestershire County Council, have been very anxious to know precisely how the case is put against them for some considerable time. And while I will be asking you to look at the skeleton argument in brief.
Yes.
May I also ask the court to look at a request for further information, which we can find in that supplemental bundle at page one hundred and twelve? As the court may have seen, the particulars of claim have gone through a considerable number of iterations, and they still haven't in fact been formulated even to this day, so we do not know finally where the claim puts the case. In this request, a succinct request, but in our submission an entirely relevant request, and shown more relevant by some of the questions that have been posed by the court today. We asked the question, which of these forms of treatment, i.e. the inhuman or degrading treatment, do you say he suffered during the period for which the Worcestershire defendant is the relevant authority? A reasonable question, and paragraph five, this is over the page, of the proposed re-amended particulars of claim, your sole allegation of negligence against the first defendant is that it returned the claimant to his mother when it should have sought a care order instead. And then these are the, the relevant question, is it your case, under paragraph A, that appropriate steps referred to therein were to seek a care order in May two thousand and fourteen, rather than return the claimant to his mother? Is it your case under Article Three, similarly to the case in negligence, confined to that allegation? If you're answered a question to two is no, please specify in relation to each of the appropriate steps, what it is suggested the first defendant or its social workers ought to have done, when it is suggested it ought to have been done, and why it is suggested it ought to have been done at that particular time. We've never had an answer to any of these questions. The, returning to the skeleton argument at page one seven eight, we, we set out the relevant procedural chronology. He's in fact, and the A B is now aged twenty rather than nineteen, this is paragraph two. We can see at paragraph three, the August two thousand and seventeen permission given for the papers to be released. The letter before action, or letter before claim was submitted on, in March two thousand and nineteen. And then there are references to the detailed chronology, the crawl chronology, although there were a lot of delays in all that, I won't weary the court with going through it, we do set it out in considerable detail. And we then say at paragraph six, we, we served that request, the request that I've just shown the court, and yet another amended particulars of claim was served. Then two months later, this is paragraph seven, a draft re-amended particulars of claim was served. It included a reference to a Professor Fox, which Lord Justice Lewis referred to, that still has not been served. So we then made applications, as did the Birmingham County Council, this is paragraph eight, to strike out and seek summary judgment, and of course, there is a distinction. The response was, paragraph eleven, a further draft of re-amended particulars of claim served on September the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. And the only purported answer to this request for further information, I'm looking at the last sentence of paragraph eleven, was an email from the A, from A B solicitors indicated that the latest draft particulars of claim was in response to the part eighteen request. So I think we can take it from that, that the final moment, the last iteration of the particulars of claim is supposed to be an answer to the very questions that have been posed during the course of the morning. It doesn't make clear when the local authority should have done what at any stage, and that is critical and important for a court, whether a court at first sense of appeal, knowing quite how the case is put. No evidence was served in response to the applications to strike out, this is paragraph thirteen, and yet two days before the hearing, a yet further draft of re-amended particulars of claim, this was the fifth attempt. So then, there was the hearing, which the court is aware. And, and then the skeleton argument was served, which quoted extensively from this threshold document, which is now sought to, the two documents, is now sought to include. Despite the fact that they had not been before the judge, a, a fairly strange course for the advisers to take. And only then was an application made, this application to rely on this additional document. Now, our, our response is that it is prima facie wholly inappropriate that this court should be asked to reverse the decision of a judge relying on a document that she did not see, when that document was available, and could with reasonable, with reasonable care, at the very least, have been made available. And this was a case where the applications were specifically framed as being for summary judgment, as well as a strikeout. So no evidence served, and it's notable, this is paragraph nineteen, that paragraph sixty-three of the judge's judgment. And, um, it's notable, this is paragraph nineteen, that at paragraph sixty three of the judge's judgment, she noted that, uh, council had submitted that social services records are not often the whole picture. It was not pleaded that other incidents had occurred other than those set out in the draft re amended particulars of claim. Or even that the court would be able to infer that other incidents had occurred. And even now, this court has no draft saying what is relied upon. Essentially, what seems to be said is, well, there are a lot of documents here. The only way really to get to the bottom of this is to have a full scale trial. And there may be something in one document or what somebody says, which is more helpful than something else. And that is no fair way in our submission to proceed in an important case, which contains very, very serious allegations against the local authority, suggesting that they've been responsible for failing to protect a child from inhuman and degrading treatment. We refer to Ladd and Marshall, which is well known. And we refer to the fact that the, uh, the well known dictor from Law Justice Denny applies to cases of summary judgment. And finally, we refer to the US mortgage finance case. And I, that's the only case I want to take to very briefly.
Well, do you want to do that at two o'clock?
I'll do the talk.
Thank you very much.
Which tab was that in, Mr, Lord Fox? Which tab was that in?
Um, sorry, it's. I have got it. It's, um, paragraph, it's tab two thirty five. Quite a short job.